...in the zoning board on Thursday, June 20th. It is now 1:30 and we will come to order. First of all, before we even open the meeting, I'd like to welcome our beautification committee. They are joining us today for part of the discussion we'll be having a little later on. The agenda additions or deletions, anybody have any?
Mr. Chairman, I handed out two examples that follow our proposal for mitigation. And one of them replaces the example that's in your agenda package.
Okay.
There are no real subs changing, but just to follow the same format.
Seeing no other, then we'll move on to public comment. Does anyone wishing to have some public comment today? Please come forward and state your name and where your address is. Seeing none, I will close that. Planning Department matters, revised proposed work program priorities. Tim, I think you'll take that.
I was the last meeting to give a little more flesh out, a couple of the program recommendations. I hope they meet your needs. So I think basically the POI was the one I probably put more on. Comes right out of the evaluation appraisal report. So unless you have specific questions to me, that should have addressed what you needed.
For members, we satisfy that.
That was the meeting priority, bud?
Right.
Yes.
Okay.
Seeing none, or I think we're fine with that?
I just want to give you an update. We had the long discussion on vacation rentals yesterday. I just wanted to tell you, so there's no misunderstanding. Staff does pursue this despite what may be quoted in the press. And we follow due process. The one thing we also do on this thing, we contact the county clerk if there's any bed tax violation. They're notified to look into that. We also, the county appraiser's office, because there's homestead exemptions on some of these property, we do contact DPR if there's no license shown. And we do also send, we've done, just recently, we sent a letter to the Florida Real Estate Commission on a complaint where we, obviously, realtors are advertising vacation rentals, where we have a complaint on a property. And again, I reiterate, we follow complaints. So if I get a formal complaint, I will follow up on it. All right? So just to get that clear, the other thing, Mr. Chairman, is that...
Before you leave that...
Yes, sir.
What do you mean by a formal complaint?
Well, somebody gives me a complaint, either anonymous complaint or that, or it's to my office, we will respond.
So a phone call?
Call is good enough and it doesn't have to have a name to it.
So we're clear.
And the staff, because of our limited resources, and all my staff, we could go through and troll the internet. I guess troll's a term, whatever. Go through the internet, we could pick up a lot of possible suspects and all that. But I don't have the staffing and all that, so to be fair to everybody, I just want you to know that we go on formal complaint. Right?
Thank you.
The other thing, since July 4th is our next meeting date, we're going to not have that meeting, but we'll be going to the next meeting, which would be July 18th.
18th. Is that everybody all right with that?
Darn.
And we have a couple of items that will be coming up on that, would be the planned development ordinance. If you recall, that will be going to hearing. And we also have the, we have an annexation proposal. We have an annexation report for you to see, somebody who does want to come into city. We must be doing something, right? And so that'll be before you. The city manager's now reviewing a report, so once he's okayed it, that'll authorize to go forward, based on our, we have a policy we follow on annexations.
There are no minutes to be reviewed. Are there any additional board member matters we'd like to be brought forward right now?
Mr. Chairman, I do have a matter. Tim, this is regarding these vacation rentals and the multiple, you know, people in these single-family neighborhoods. What can we do about enforcement on this? Because I understand, you know, what you've been doing, and I appreciate your comments on that. Because, you know, we had Mr. Hunter here last week, last meeting, and he talked about these major problems that are in his neighborhood. But he's not alone on that. There's original town and...
Well, and I agree with him, but we're not getting people complaining. We got people, I need to have complaints to be able to have my staff spend the resources, and they take time. You heard that, how long it took. Now, this particular property that Mr. Hunter brought up, we're fined $50, admitting to a violation. But the next week, the property owners are now in the property, as far as we can tell. So this goes on, but my staff now has to keep, to monitor these. It's a difficult thing to do. And I explained that we have to make sure that there is a violation occurring, meaning we have to look at the internet, then we hopefully can interview somebody at the site. But people are being couched, or coached in what they can say. So you have a lot of relatives that are visiting lately. So it's that kind of thing. It makes it difficult. But that's how we follow up. As I said, a complaint will trigger it. So if you have some people in original town or that, that you know, that are, have them call my office, they don't have to leave their name, we need a specific address for us to look into it. Obviously, in this case, is we like to get the neighborhood, particularly, say, like a Mr. Hunter, who can watch what's going on. I cannot have somebody live in the neighborhood all the time on one, on a case. So we need to have cooperation of the homeowner association, neighborhood, or the property, or the people that reside nearby to enforce these cases.
So the crux of this problem with enforcement, as you see it then, is that people are not complaining formally to you, they're merely grumbling among themselves?
Right. I'm not getting that. I mean, I get a lot of people, not a lot of people, I haven't had a lot since this last case, but we are not getting complaints in this office. And I said, based on my limited resources, I have.
Yeah, see...
I'm going to have to go by complaints.
Yeah.
And I'm not going to pick and choose, or I'll be accused of, you know, discretionary application, you know, of...
Exactly. I was wondering if we could give the enforcement any kind of teeth that your staff could respond to, and it wouldn't be a burden to them.
Well, it's very difficult. As I said, we're tied by the state law. The state has made sure that we can't treat these dwelling units any differently than we do other residential. So one way you do that is you would have to start putting stricter regulations on single-family or other residential. But even that may not address the problem. You see what I'm saying? So it'd be great if we could, and I get back, as I explained at last meeting, the county staff tried to clarify the law, not to change it, because they had to follow the statutes, and you saw what happened. You know, so we're doing the best we can with what we have. And you'll see this afternoon on the boarding house, we feel we have a little more leeway to put in looking at advertisements as a violation. We don't feel we have the same, because a boarding house is different. We're looking at it differently. It's not the same as a vacation rental. You know, to us, an advertising vacation rental is a possibility, you know, it's enough grounds for us to investigate, but not enough for us to do anything until we get some conclusive evidence. All right?
Tim, by the time, when a person does respond to you, or does make a complaint, what kind of response time is reasonable to say that code enforcement would go there and look?
Well, if somebody calls, say, we have people right now out there, we could probably respond within that day or the next day on that.
24, 48 hours.
But if there's nobody there, and the people have already left, we don't have a violation occurring. So that's why we need the neighbors to say, hey, we have people there right now. And that allows us to go out on the site and see that, either looking at license plate, so we start looking at the internet more, at that site. So we look at different things to see if we can build a case to do that. And then we have to decide, we have enough to go forward on that. But a lot of times, if we don't have quite the case, we're going to give them a warning. And we feel that's a fair thing to do. You know, that we have enough reason to believe that...
Who gets the warning? The homeowner?
The homeowner and probably the agent, if the agent's involved. A lot of times, you'll find they'll have a real estate or an agency that's handling the property.
So the person who's doing the venting is an innocent victim in all of this? Is that how we perceive it?
Well, right. The person doing the venting, I mean, basically, people are violating our code. So, you know, you're protected, call it whistleblower, but any kind of violation of code, you don't have to give, we will not disclose your name if you don't want it. But however, in some cases, we do ask, are you willing to testify? Which we may need testimony, because my staff may not have, they would not be able to confirm something, somebody else may have to. For instance, you go up to the house, a neighbor goes up to the house, say, well, hi, are you new there? Oh, yeah. Well, how long, oh, we're going to be here a week, we're from Tennessee, we're doing... See, that's enough evidence there, if they're willing to testify, that we could maybe take that to the code enforcement board.
And without that, our job's more difficult?
Our job's more difficult. My staff has to see that. I cannot just use advertisements in the paper, or on the internet, or anything like that. It's a probable cause, but it's not enough to sustain that.
Would it be fair to say then, when the neighborhoods join together, like in any kind of crime watching, et cetera, and help participate, they can make our process more effective?
That's exactly right. And these kind of situations, neighborhoods, even with those boarding houses, we need the neighborhood cooperation. That's the best way to deal with that.
But it's not a police matter anyway, is it? Unless there's something that's a violation.
No, these are, these are just misdemeanor civil violations of the code, and boy, we have enough of those.
Except when there's, you know, all-night partying.
Well, and then, but even those are, you know, your violations are no ordinance and all that, but they are a detrimental impact on the neighborhood. I'm not saying they're not. That's why we have rules that don't allow transit rental of property in residential zones in our, in the city. Even multifamily, we do not allow that. So it's, where you find it, and some of the condos and that are in the C-1A, where they allow that, you can do that in those districts.
But not in single-family neighborhoods?
Not in single-family, or even the multifamily. We're pretty good. As I said, it'd be nice to be able to fine tune the code more to deal with this issue, but we can't. So again, doing the best we can with what we got.
So there's nothing really that we can do to tighten up that couple?
Well, I mean, not really. Maybe getting, getting somebody challenging and putting us, that we're violating the state statutes. So we're doing, we're moving on this. And I think part of this is the more attention it gets in the newspapers...
Yeah, exactly.
It's going to help, especially, we send letters off to the, to the real estate commission. That had an immediate effect on one of the realtors. Suddenly, their ads have changed. Whether they stopped doing what they're doing, it did have an impact. So as I said, there are a lot of ways, and we try to use every resource we have. That's why we use this county, those other agencies, because that puts more pressure on them to do that.
On our next meeting then, could you give us the margin, put on the agenda item?
Sure, we can make this, you know, continuing on if you like on that. And I'll keep you updated on...
It's got to be handled.
Yes, and it is being handled, I can tell you that.
Right.
Tim, what about the penalties?
Well, the penalties is normally...
Those nickel-and-dime things are not...
Normally, the way we've worked, and we have an escalating penalty clause in our code. And it goes from $50 for the first offense, $100, $150, $200, it goes to $250. And we can start doing it a day. That means we would have to go out and show it as a reoccurring. We haven't done it yet. If, for instance, a violator continues, we will go to that route if we have to.
Could we?
We could look at raising penalties in the code. That can be done by ordinance. However, you're raising the ante on this, and I'm concerned, because we're in an area where there are a lot of, shall we say, forces out there would like to see the code changed. You know, so we're doing the best we can to keep, we don't want to be, have somebody take us, because we're running afoul of the law, and we're treating vacation rentals differently. But we do have some leeway, and I've talked to the attorney about that. So let's see how this works, and if we can get, and I would appreciate people giving us a complaint, we will follow up on it. You know, that gives me...
Are we permitted to identify where these locations are? Is that something we can do as a public notification that...
Well, I mean...
Shame is what I'm looking for.
Well, I mean...
You know, sometimes you identify, or take the real estate agent we might be referring to. If this person is knowingly doing this, are we, is it some violation for to say, this kind of person does these things? If you said that about myself, I would surely want to change my ways quickly if I...
Well, we have to be careful. What we normally, send a letter to them and say, it appears, you know, based on your ads and your running, you are, we believe, you're, apparently, you're violating, you're not allowed to do short-term rentals. And we do that to them. What you're saying, you want us to publicly do that? I'm not willing to go there, because, well, we don't know if the violations are actually occurring. I would have to get some legal counsel. I'm not putting us...
Wouldn't want to say someone's name and find out later that they had not been guilty of doing that.
Then you're in trouble, too.
But it is public information, and you can request that...
You can request the public information.
The letter that Tim just mentioned is public.
And clearly, we have member of the press here, and she has done that, you know, she has information that she could do the same thing. And we are getting that. We have a famous case going on right now, you know, and so it does get out there.
I believe it's this board's opinion, and I'm speaking for myself, but I think I represent the board here, that we would like to do what we can to support stronger regulations, because it isn't happening where I live at, but if it did, I know how I would feel. And I think we all feel very similar to that.
Well, I mean, it's a...
So what we can do, we want to do.
Yeah, I'm just telling you, there's only so much we can do with changing regulations, because of what the state has done to us.
Yeah, the state has preempted the field.
And it really makes it difficult. I mean, I live in a gated community, and we have rules against this specifically, and we know it goes on. It's very difficult to keep an eye on what's going on, because unfortunately, a lot of people, unless you're in a close neighborhood, don't know what the other people are doing, and probably don't know who they are, you know, so...
Most communities, a lot of them are safe, safer than the regular resident in the city might be, because of an HOA association. And they have teeth and lean, ability to lean, and et cetera, and they can create rules and regulations where the city is kind of more difficult to...
Well, it's still difficult to do where the homeowners have got the money after it. But I think what you find, the market, the economy's also done this. We have a lot of homes out there that people want to get their bucks back. I know how that is. I've got one. But I'm not doing this kind of thing. And they, you know, they need to get a return on it, so you have a lot, there's a lot of incentive to do this. Yeah.
Mr. Chairman, I also wanted to ask about the penalties, follow up on, Joe. You mentioned that you charged a one-time $50, and Mr. Hunter talked about that. And he says, you're charging 50, a one-time $50 penalty, and they're getting $2,000 a week.
Well, and that's a true statement.
And even if it was $50 a day, they could go, you know, for the rest of their lives, but...
No, no, no. Mr. Mootcher, that isn't, that isn't what I said. I said, we escalating it. And that's what we're going to do in these cases. We haven't done that because it's...
But you haven't, and that case that's gone on for months is...
No, we got them on a violation here, and now they're back in their house. They have several houses, so there's nothing you can do. I don't have vacation rentals, far as I know, in the house right now. We have the family that owns the house, okay? And I'm not trying to, I'm just telling you how, now, we're going to keep an eye on these kind of things, because, you know, we look at the calendars on the internet. Hopefully, we get a call, we got other people, and we will go out there and do it, and we will go to $100 if we immediately, and we may do it by day. It depends on a reoccurring...
I would encourage you to do it by day.
Do we need to get that into the code?
Well, we do that automatically. It's a discretion in the code. I have the discretion to do a lot of things in the code. But I'm carefully doing this with our attorney's office, so we don't be put in a pickle on this thing. And being fair to the people, because I think they get the knowledge. I mean, if it worse came to worse, and we were running up the cost of this, we will go to court and get an injunction against what they're doing, if we have to. But that's really escalating it. And I think, you know, I mean, I'm used to people paying fines to do, as a cost of business. But there comes to a point that we will shut them down, one way or another. Okay? And if they continue to do it. We're not going to let them to do this in the neighborhood where they're openly doing that. But it isn't quite that obvious, and they know we're watching them now, so it's...
You said that the owner is in the house now, and so there's no violation. There was testimony last meeting that the owner was in another house that was renting out by the day, week, or month.
The owner has three...
And so if the owner's shuttling back and forth, they're playing a shell game on you. I don't...
We have to catch it when they actually have renters in the house, okay? I can't go say that the owners are violating their house when they're, that's their house.
Their house.
Okay? So you understand? So I have to wait till they actually...
You mean, only renters in the house?
Pardon?
Only renters in the house?
I mean, they could have family members coming down from New York to the place. And if they're not paying, I mean, I mean, think about it. I mean, that's not over the vacation rental thing, you know, so that's what I'm telling you, how difficult these things are.
I just find it hard to believe we've got two homeless with one owner, and many, many renters, and...
I'm sorry.
In the last two weeks, they just straightened up to fly, and are flying right.
Well, I mean, that's how they're, I mean, there are provisions now in the Florida statute, you don't lose your homestead exemption. If you, are you aware, they just passed this that allows you, in a calendar year, to do 30 days rentals, as long as you don't do more than 30 in two consecutive years. Meaning, you could do 30 one year, 180 the next, and not violate the law. That is in the Florida statute now, not lose your homestead exemption. And this was because up in northern Florida, somebody wanted to be, take care of tennis matches and whatever, not tennis and golf and all that, and they wanted to have more hotel rooms. I mean, the Florida legislature is making it harder and harder for local governments to deal with these things.
It's not happening, happening just there. A lot of your beach resort towns have the same type of situation.
Yeah, and most of the beach resort towns have, that is their issue. I mean, I can tell you that. When I was in Monroe County, because we have a strict ordinance, we had these problems. I would get calls from all sorts of communities wanting to know what to do and how to do it, because...
I thought this was a beach resort town.
It is.
Well, it is.
Sort of.
Yeah, so, anyway, I think we're beating a dead horse, but I will certainly keep you up to date in where we're going on that.
Look forward to that.
We will look at where we can do some more, possibly some higher penalties. I'm just saying it's, it's a...
The enforcement and the repercussion, you know, that's important.
I just have a question about the penalties. How long has it been $50?
Oh, it's in the code.
I know, but I mean, how long, has it been years?
First offense is $50.
Has it been...
No, first offense, we don't normally go and just find people. We have a warning process, and generally, either you're going to get a nice letter, or a phone call, or you're going to get a warning citation. We don't go out and just slap fines on people.
I understand.
That isn't how we try. Our major focus is compliance, not to, you know, penalties. But when you find people that won't comply, that's where then we come down, where you see liens and everything else are put on property that are ongoing, and we deal with that.
Yeah, we've seen these liens for $40,000 for people that don't mow their lawn for months at a time. And this kind of rental's been going on for months at a time.
Because it's easy, it's very easy to determine if you haven't, that's right. And somebody doesn't come in, and we go and do an abatement on it or something, and they haven't, and they didn't come and pay their fines. This continues and continues. And then the abatement takes care of it. But a lot of these people, for instance, we had a property that ran $48,000, they did everything. But they forgot to take care, or they were told, and they just didn't do it. They had an unpermitted portable carport out there, and it went on for two years. And that was running $50 a day on that fine. So it rolled up the fines on that, so...
Tim, it seems like we don't have enough incentive for compliance, and I just keep coming back into that. What kind of time period, you know, code enforcement will get out in 24 to 48 hours. What kind of time period has, elapses then, before they receive a warning? Suppose that you, you know, you determine that there and...
Well, I mean, it really depends on what we find. If we find it's probable cause, they will get a warning, most likely.
How soon?
Well, as soon as we can determine there's enough for us to give them a warning.
When it happens.
And that's the problem. You'll have somebody call us, there's nobody there, what are we supposed to do? We look on the internet, you may not find the address. So we have to have enough for us to do that. Look, we go beyond that, we're going to be harassing people. And that isn't, we're not in business just to harass people, and...
If you went out on Monday and they were there, but you got the call on Monday, went out on Tuesday, might have left Monday night.
Yes.
Therefore, you're back to the next time they do, if you get a call immediately, and are they, you know, it's...
In that case, we try to work, we tell the people to call, look, we need your help on these things. If you can keep a journal, you can do this for, that helps us immensely. Give us a call. My staff will come out there on weekends if they need to do this, which they've done. So I want to tell you, we're doing what we can here. So, but we will look at if there's any way we could put for the specific situation, a little more penalty into it. And I'll talk to the city attorney, see what we could do on that. I understand where you're coming from, okay?
Thank you, Tim.
You're welcome.
Any other questions for Tim? Are there any additional board matters? Then I think we'll move for adjournment.
So moved.
Good idea.
Tim's ready.
Do you have a second? We're adjourned. Thank you. We'll immediately go into a workshop discussion. And the two items on today's discussion will be mitigation requirements of the tree protection ordinance. And the second part of that will be proposed, we're going to get to that one, I believe, Tim, correct? Proposed revision to the...
I hope so.
City regulation regarding boarding houses and reasonable accommodation.
All right. Do you want me to start?
Yes, I'd like to. Take the floor, Tim.
Okay. As, we had our workshop back in May, if you all recall, and at that time, we've given you some preliminary revisions, very similar to what you see in front of you now. However, based on your input, there were some concerns about, particularly about trees that are located right near the residences, also concerns about the mitigation requirements, were they too onerous, are they too lax? And you asked the staff to look into it. The other thing that we did bring up, also, we were concerned about the process itself, and having to go through quasi judicial hearings for this process. So we took in what you did, we reviewed it. I provided a advanced draft to, Nedet Haynes, and the Nets, and the audience to look over, particularly some of the technical issues that were brought up at the meeting, so you get Nedet's recommendations on that. So we proposed, made some revisions to the text, I outlined it. I just want to point, this is really a rough draft. I mean, I've got some mislabels in there, I got some editing needs to be done. Peggy's already gone through it and made me look like I went to grade school, but other than that, get, put it down. I'm already arguing with you.
By the way, it was rough, Tim. I mean, there's places you couldn't read. Can I read, or...
And anyway, and I saw, I want us today...
It is a public school.
Yeah, I want us to, today, just focus on the substantive issues in there, because Peggy and I will re-edit the whole thing and make it read better. And particularly, most likely, the way it's chopped up, it's hard to follow. So when we do the actual ordinance, we're probably just going to delineate, delete all sections and put new in. That's the easiest way, because we'd never get this codified this way, and it would be a mess. So I just want you to be aware of that. So what I'm going to do is kind of briefly go over the major things, very briefly, and then ask you how you want us to approach this. We can go page by page, or we can just start talking about issues as we go through. Certainly, if you have any specific questions, I think one of the handicaps you're suffering, I only gave you one, one of the sections of the, in the mitigation requirements, you don't have the whole code. So don't feel bad if you have to ask me, "What does that mean, Tim? Where does this fit?" I brought the code here if I can't remember. So if we can look at that, but that, I didn't want to burden you with the whole code or, but, and I also didn't want to waste all that.
I'd like to ask the board, I think, Tim, before you proceed, is how do we want to bring the beautification committee into this? Do we want to let this be an integral part of our discussion or do you want to...
Oh, yeah.
Do you have any kind of presentation for, about what your positions are, anything like that? So we might want to know ahead of time.
Larry, I don't think so. Most of us got a copy of this material this morning by email, so.
Okay.
And, and I don't think any of us have had a true opportunity to go through it. Plus, as commented on, when you look at this without having the benefit of the prior discussion and/or backup material, you're kind of skating on thin ice.
That's why I made phone calls to Tim because I had a couple of things wrong when I was making my points.
Yeah, I apologize, you should have gotten those things last week. I don't know why you would have gotten now, okay. So, anyway, we didn't, I didn't intend it that way.
Well, to answer your question, Mr. Chairman, I think they ought to be treated as equals because hopefully they know more, more about trees than we do.
This is a workshop anyway, so really we need your input on this. And we're not, we're not making final decisions here anyway, so.
And members of the public that are out there, there's four people I see in our audience, if any of you have any time, I think you can come up at random if you wish to make a comment or speak to the group and feel comfortable to do that, I think. Since there's such a few of us here, at any time you feel comfortable, like, just come to the podium, give your name and we'll let you speak. Okay, Tim?
Okay. Well, the first thing I'd like to, we've, the ordinance, or the provisions itself, we've really comprehensively revised it, putting the authority now in the, in the administrative authority to the planning director rather than any provisions to come before you for a quasi judicial hearing. Now, obviously, in our code, any decision by the planning director or any member is subject to appeal to you as the appellant body. So that's not in here, but our code has that up in another provision, so that's it. Again, I think we talked about it, the costs and delays of going through a process for people to have. And the only, right now, the only time they would come to you would be for specimen trees or if they were trying to waive some of the mitigation requirements for, if they're on, they have a multifamily or non-residential property. I think after the discussions, from watching, going through, Peggy and I have talked about it, we just don't think the quasi judicial process is really a very good venue for this kind of thing. I think what we're seeing in the code, if we have a clear bright line in the code with little discretion, I think it can be done ministerially by the staff and it'll be fair to everybody without going before a board where you don't know what the decision's going to be made. People show up at the board, as we know, at the hearings and plead all sorts of things that may not be germane to it, but it's hard not to listen to what they have to say and it may influence your vote. So that is one of the major changes I made and I didn't tell you that, I don't think, at the last meeting. After we went through, I says, "You know what? We can make this a lot simpler." And that's one of the things I wanted to do here for everybody involved.
Mr. Chairman, that's the one part of all of this that really has me uneasy because it, it puts this into a political realm and it, it puts a lot of burden on staff.
Well, I, I don't feel that way because you don't see a lot of things now that we have to deal with. For instance, we'll have people come in, "My tree, this tree's going to damage my house." Well, we will go through the painstaking, what it is, visit the site. They may have an arborist or that. If it looks like it's, it meets the definition, we'll go ahead and do it. You don't ever get any of those. We don't have that problem. I'm not saying that our, the fee we have for this is only $20, so it doesn't cover the cost of doing this. But the whole idea is we want people to come in to get a permit to cut trees down. And that was the, one of the, one of the things here to protect our tree, we're a tree city, we want tree protection, this is an incentive for people to come in. So as long as the criteria are very straightforward and there isn't a lot of discretion involved, that's why it falls eas, more easily into the ministerial. You know, people are going to come before you, they're going to say, "Well, we got to look at these factors." Well, even that is pretty discretion, I mean, and I was going to get into that just now. And that's why I feel more comfortable and I want you to feel comfortable about it. I think the key thing is that we come up with a bright line calculation for mitigation and we can talk about, do you want to have some opportunity that they could appeal something, not appellate, but maybe there'd be something for hardship. We haven't talked about that, I didn't go into that. I don't think that will be an issue, but, but I think once you've put that in and changed the current system, the current system right now is way too arbitrary. Oh, yeah, we, we have pretty good, the requirements, you can calculate what the mitigation is, that's not very difficult to do. The problem is, everybody wants to have a waiver. Because, and I've got examples I show in there of how expensive if you did, if you followed exactly what the code says. And probably on somebody who owns a half a million dollar property, $12,000 may not be that big a deal. But we don't have a lot of properties there, except on the Bear Island. A lot of our properties are 15, 16,000 on the mainland and you're talking about, and not that they have that many trees, but you're talking about a significant impact on any type of, on that property. So the waiver process, even if you put factors in, trying to come up with something that would give consistent results out of that, I think it was impossible. I mean, I can tell you, I've already done a bunch of waivers when people come in and even my decisions aren't that consistent. I'm one person, not five of you making the decision. So I'm trying to make this as simple as possible. Somebody knows upfront what's going to be required of them and they can make their decisions. And actually, it helps many ways because, think about it, if you have a waiver process which is like a blanket variance, people then don't have the incentives necessary to, to, to design the house or the improvements to save the trees. So this gives them a little more incentive to look at it than coming in and getting a waiver. And that's why I just think that it would work that, better that way. Now, whether what I'm proposing in here, the SASS proposing is what you want to see or you want to tweak it more, that's fine. I just need to get, what I'm trying to show you is we want to get something that is, as I said, a bright line, it can be calculated and there's no if and buts about it like we have now in the system.
Mr. Chairman, I don't have a problem with anything Tim just said, but in starting out reading through this, it, it said, "Well, we're concerned about the cost to the applicant and we're not going to have two permits, which is going to save him $20." But then there were some requirements about recent aerial photographs and arbor certified professional arborist surveys and those kind of things started to sound costly. And then you get to the middle of page three and it says, "All this can be..."
Yeah, I know, and they do.
Up to the planning director's discretion.
When the people come in, they get, they can give us a little plat, we don't go into a lot. The time they need a certified arborist, if there's a question about the age of the tree or a disease or it may have an impact, that's the only time they need to have that. We normally, the staff will look at it, we'll call in, Annette will come in and help us out. We've even gone to, we had a bank one time trying to take down a bunch of oaks over there in Beachland and, because it was affecting the cars. Well, we did not let them do it, we had our own arborist paid, we paid for it and they did not do that. They did some trimming and that was fine. So we saved the trees. So normally, the people don't have to go through all that. And like an aerial photograph, we have aerial photographs.
Yep.
We just ask them to put it and it helps, they know upfront, you know, what it is. And if we, and the aerial photographs is not only to see the lot, but it's also if we use the tree canopy as a calculation, we have something to go by.
But what I'm referring to is on page one of C3, whenever you've got more than one tree, it's, it's asking for all that documentation.
Well, you, you would show it all on one plat. You would show the tree and all that. People do it all the time. We never, I mean, the only time you have a lot of trees is when you have either redevelopment going on the site. Most of the time, like you just saw that Poitiers Drive one. Most of them are going to be single trees, they'll show the trees that they have in the site and now we're just, so now this would be simplified more because the, oh, goodbye. This would be simplified because you're only looking at the, you know, we're really looking at the tree canopy and looking at the trees they're removing. But it does help us to know where the other trees are because suppose they want to relocate, we want to be sure it's relocated in an appropriate position, that, location. We put some of that in there. So I don't see as owner, we have not had complaints about that at all.
Mark, I can assure you, I went through this process myself, it was a few years back now, so it may be modified somewhat. And I did the drawing myself, I had to go out and measure and I had approximate, I wrote the word approximately, so it wasn't down to sixteenth of an inch or something. And, and then the aerial was on there, even though the aerial was a little old when I got it up, I had copied it.
Yeah, but this is recent aerial and a survey, or a survey prepared by a certified arborist.
Well, I drew it on my...
You're not a certified arborist.
The survey I had from my home, I drew it on there and measured from that survey.
Yeah.
And pretty soon I had a drawing and they accepted my drawing.
Yeah.
Now, somebody did go out and look at the...
I know, but this is added language.
Okay, we're...
But it says "or."
It's "or."
Yeah, I think it's "or."
What's a recent aerial photograph?
Right off, property appraisers.
Yeah.
Property appraiser, we have them. See, if, if the applicant doesn't have it, we'll run one off our Pro Viewer, which is a 2011 aerial.
You can print them yourself, Mark.
Or you can go on the Google, Google Earth where you can get a...
Yeah, you can do that too.
So, I mean, this is not, I mean, the old days, this would have been more of a burden for people, but we'll do it for them if they don't have it. We're not, I mean, we're there to help people through the process, not to punish.
All right, well, and that would be a before picture, but isn't there some requirement for an after as well?
Well, no, because if, I've, I revised this process to look at the existing tree canopy, we kind of, I threw all that out. We were talking about looking at what the before and after, but now we were just looking at what the mitigation was based on, what the tree canopy, that would affect some of the, what, some of the mitigation in it. And that, so it wouldn't be necessary to have an after.
Mr. Chairman, I just have to say, we can nitpick this thing to death and the longer we do it, the longer it'll take us to get it going. And I think compared with what we have, this draft is a very significant improvement in what we've got. It, it provides specific measurements, including taking into account for purposes of mitigation establishment, the canopy, the total canopy of the lots. It provides knowledgeable staff people with the authority to do a, a, a good examination and make a judgment. It moves, it moves things along much more quickly, I think, than the old system, which is an advantage to the property owner and the city as well. I, I, I think it's an excellent job and if it was up to me, I would throw a handful of Bravo Zulus to Tim and the staff of his people who put it together.
I'll second that motion.
I'm not ready to give him that money yet.
No. We've already had our discussion, I know where he stands. Anyway, I'm sorry, I'm trying to, so that was, the other thing we, one of the things that we brought, we talked about, we wanted more diversity. So we tried to, one of the things that we have in there, we have a selection of plants from, for central Florida, but Annette said, you know, "Those are good, but you know, maybe too limiting." So we put in a proviso that we could approve other ones in there. And that would be in consultation with Annette on that, we could allow other replacement plants in there. We also said, we decided that the three inch diameter for all trees and stuff is, we don't want, in fact, is the lowest we should go, just to make sure of the survival. So you've noticed, even protected trees, they have to be three inch minimum now, okay? And the other change in there, we've, trees are different in the heights and all that, so we've added the matrix in there, the matrices, I'm sorry, there's one through five and depending on what type of tree they are, tells you what, at three inches, what the minimum height should be, or recommended height. So that, that's a variable. And we'll have that, it's adopted by reference in the code or in here, but we'll have that available in the office and on our website so people can, that don't have it. But most people that are having their properties done are very, are very aware of these will, of these kind of things. So those are the major changes in it. One thing I did find, and I just wanted to bring it up to you, I did get into, the good thing when you get into these things is you get to look at some other things in the code and the concern I had is, I don't think we were following up well enough on the, on the, when the trees are, after we've okayed this, make sure that things are being done properly on the site. And I did call the Poitiers, I went out myself on that. So one of the things that we're going to do, and I'm not trying to spring, I've talked to Public Works, is, they're supposed to do also a erosion seven control plan with these things. We, we could have the, look at the same time they're doing that, that they go out and make sure that they're protecting the trees during, that are being left on the site during the construction. And that was one of the things that kind of bothered me. It's one of these things that we, you know, you assume it's being done, but unless you, in this case, it wasn't totally done. So that's, that's part of what we, it's always good to look at this thing.
But Tim, your county inspector does check all plants and things for, at the end of the...
Well, yeah, they, they will at the end before we'll give the, their certificate of occupancy or the completion, they have to look at it, but it's critical during the construction phase that things are being done properly because that's where you can lose the plant somewhere down the line and we wouldn't want to have that happen. And, and we need to follow up on erosion seven control anyway, so I think it'll fit. But we'll work those kind of coordination things out. So it was, as I said, it's good to get in here because it forces me to go through every little step we do to make sure it's being done properly. And those are one of the things, I don't talk about it in here, but I want you to be aware, we do look at it a lot more than just what, what's before you. Okay, Mr. Chairman, I, I don't, you want me to, how would you like to proceed?
Could we go through this page by page? I've got little notes, questions all over.
Okay.
Okay.
You want me to just kind of go through like we normally do?
I think it'd be easier for them to follow.
And feel, everybody can jump in, they give you that. Okay, the first page, we talked about the multiple trees or palms that basically, we'll have a single permit application, as I explained before, we were doing that anyway. And it gets kind of complicated if you don't, you, and so this process, since we're all looking at the trees as one, it's not going to you, it's not bifurcated, the specimens are going to you and the other ones to us, it's, it works out that way. So we discussed this at the last meeting. I'm, I'm going to page two unless somebody stops me, so.
Tim, all this reference to relocation, is that always on site or can they dedicate it?
Yes, it's relocation and we would, that's one thing Peggy pointed out, we're probably going to, I said, we're going to edit a little just to make sure that's clear in there on relocation to site.
Would there ever be a circumstance where they would transplant this tree over to some city property or...
We, we haven't done that. Right now, it's onsite location. I would have to, Annette could join in whether that makes, because see, we're talking about the cost to do that, I guess the county, the city could offer, "Hey, we would like that tree" and do that.
How about a neighbor's yard?
Uh, we haven't talked about that. That brings in another property owner involved in the thing. Yeah, but...
I guess we're getting a fee.
I put it on public, I think the option should be public property.
Yeah, we, Monroe County, we did that. And we would have, every now and then, you'd have somebody do it. And certainly, there may be a big tree that, from the standpoint, and we just heard about one this morning, at the meeting, they were talking, the, that, and whether that could be moved or not, I'm just, but we have, you know, where you may have a tree that's big enough that, gee, maybe we can save it, if we looked at it, the city would be willing to do that and, you know. So, I mean, I could, we could make some provisions that could be done that way and just leave the co, the negotiation, how it's done, negotiate between the city and the applicant if they're willing to do that.
Yeah.
Okay? Because there may be a tree on site that, that makes, you know, that would be that significant or that the city would like to do that, okay?
Makes sense.
Let's see, most of that, and as I said, we will make sure that language is onsite. I'm going to page three and we eliminated all, like D, where you see down there, the old D, the application, because everything's now under one section. It's, I know you get confused, but it's all under one section. So go to page four and that's where we start the new section. And it's kind of confusing, but D would be the new application review section. All right?
Slow down.
I know.
Got it, I got it.
Okay, page five, that's basically what we already have in the language, we've added, or six has been added, it was moved up from G and we probably could do a little wordsmithing on that. So, so that makes sense, I think Peggy pointed out, whether areas or improvements. So we may look at that a little more closely. And I think one of the things brought out, one of these things, just because you, you may be near some of this, we would have, this is one of the cases where either you have an arborist that comes in and says, "Look, it's going to dam, do this damage," or we would have Nanette probably look at it to okay something. We're just not going to take somebody, say, "Oh, it's going to damage my house." We get that all the time. We were going to look at this before we would approve something and we certainly, now, if they don't like the administrative decision on that, certainly they can appeal to you all, so. All right.
I'm going to come...
Go ahead.
A comment there. If we had an administrative decision that says, "This house is not jeopardizing your property" and it comes to this board and this board says it's not jeopardizing your property and it goes as far as it can go...
Well, it can be appealed into the council.
My point.
Yeah.
It goes there and they, they also agree. And the next thing happening is it jeopardizes their property. What is our situation then? Because we're, they said, "I have a problem and I want to remedy my problem." We say, "It's not a problem and you can't remedy it." And then if something happens, whose problem is it now?
Well, that's a government, government decision in our proprietary capacity and we would have sovereign immunity because it's a planning decision, it's a legislative decision by this board in setting this policy, by the council in setting the policy through the first reading and the public hearing, and we would be protected by that.
And remember, the process that goes through, if they appeal, it's going to be quasi judicial on those levels. So they would have to have some evidence there that it's going to damage their property. If they can't show it, then they've had their opportunity.
I'm not saying they show it, the next thing that occurs is that it does damage their property.
We're protected.
Yes, we're protected.
Because sovereign immunity was put into place so that we would be protected from review by judicial or other boards.
Is there any way we would be, could be liable? Because I asked an individual that question, who I thought, and I got a contrary answer to that, there is some, we have some culpability.
By setting the legislative policy?
No, by denying the person the right to remove the fear that they have of this, and once it occurs, their insurance...
Well, operating under the policy, you would still have the sovereign immunity tort cap of $2,300,000, $200,000 to $300,000. But I, I don't think we'd have an issue.
Okay, just following up on that.
If this person who you spoke to had other information, let me know, but I really don't don't see an issue.
And I didn't get a legal opinion, but I got an opinion.
Okay.
I understand, I don't, you know, I didn't want to pay for the opinion, you know, I'm not, it costs me a lunch only right now. If I push it a little further, it'd be more than lunch.
Maybe I should have lunch with that person, right?
That's right.
I wanted to ask about if someone was to appeal one of your decisions, is there a significant cost associated with the appeal to bring it here?
It's five or $600 to come to you, I think it's 500. Well, you know, it doesn't mean that we can't set a different appeal for trees. I mean, these are not quite the same, but we need to cover the cost, at least the hearing, to cover that in some of the time. So, I mean, if you feel that you would like to do that, just make a recommendation to me and we certainly can consider doing that as part of this process. I mean, I'm not, I mean, I know the county, we do have different, we have a couple different levels for appeals. A county charges more if it's a adjacent landowner appealing a decision than the applicant themselves. So we could lower the, you know, we could have a different appeal cost if you feel it would be reasonable to do that. We've not really had an issue with that kind of thing. We must have worked these out with the people.
Well, and we may never, I just, you know, would like us to be reasonable.
But you'd like us to, we could look at that if, if I, nobody's saying no, I don't necessarily, the staff doesn't necessarily have a problem, I just want to make sure I cover our out-of-pocket expenses.
Mark, one of the things I, I think I've come to realize, as I've been working on this, and I had, always had some objections to this ordinance in particular. And one of the things I've come to the conclusion, 90% of the people, and I'm making these percentages up, there's no basis on them, and I'll say 95% of people want to save as many trees in their yard as possible. And they're actually work, want to work with you to save these trees. There's very few people want to go out there and just destroy as many trees as possible. But people also have the individual concerns for their property. This one's hanging over my house, that's a concern. I'm going to put a pool in in a couple of years, that's a concern. I planted these, I'm not going to put these trees in my yard because when they get big, I can't cut them down. That's a negative incentive, okay? Don't plant a tree if you don't want to cut it down because you put a three-inch tree in now, and in a couple of years, you've got a six-inch tree, and now you have to cut it down, so you have to get a permit to cut it down and pay mitigation. So I think there's some mixed bags and some mixed signals we're sending to some of our people, and that's the kind of thing I want to get into. I think there's some unintended consequences to what we're doing here, and I'd like to get into those as we get a little further along. But I think most people want this because we like trees. I'm one of the biggest tree huggers around, although I'm not a big fan of this particular ordinance. But I think there's some reasonable things in here that we are getting, and I think we're moving to make it more fair to the person who has a right to do what he'd like to do on his personal lot. So I think I said my, it's kind of the beginning of my speech.
You're consistent, I have to say. Okay, let's see, I've added some more language about proposed improvements in dealing with the tree protection zone. And that's the zone that's out from the base of the tree, it's usually one and a half times the diameter or five feet. And that's what we use when, when you're, when you have trees onsite to protect them from the construction.
What's the number you use?
Oh, it's one and a half, it's one and a half times the, 1.25 times, or five feet, whichever is greater, okay? So a larger tree has a greater protection area. What I'm saying in this thing is, anything within that zone, we'll review it. Do you remember, there's a question came out where the tree that the gentleman had, and his probably was too close there, then we would consult Nanette, say, on this, or we'd have an arborist who would do that, and we would look at it. Because there are things you can do to the tree to protect it and not take it out even that zone. So to just blanket, say, you get rid of everything within that, we thought it was a little too draconian, so that, so we put some language in there to do that. But we did identify that as an issue, so people would look at it. All right, I'm on page six, and we're, we got number E, the waiver conditions. I don't even know I had that in there because the basic thing was, you would get, we're on page six.
No, I understand.
Yeah, I don't know why, yeah, we had it in there as basically, because you have to have certain reasons to take a tree down. Well, this gave you a waiver from those conditions to cut the tree down, like you may, you know, for whatever. I don't know why we had it in there, it was probably an escape valve, but we got rid of it. Or I think we should get rid of it because, one, it's never been used, and it probably just re, leads to more confusion and questions than anything else, so.
Is there a consensus that we agree with that?
Yeah, I think so.
I do too.
Do we have, like, emergency or hurricane?
Right, we have, there's emergency upfront that we, on deal on that. So we had an hurricane, we have an emergency, you're gonna have trees down, we have blanket okay for people. We haven't really talked about, we used to just give retroactive permits, we'd give you a blanket okay to go ahead, and we'd come back later to do the permit, whether it was a fee permit or not a fee, it's really up to the council and how they want to handle the post.
I did that after the hurricanes, and everybody was very good. But the, I wonder if those things expire, or if any of these things expire? You know, you get a permit or a plan, is there a period of time that it has to be carried out?
Well, usually, I think our permits, I think we got, I forgot, I'd have to look back here, I think there's a period of time, if you're building, so usually it'll go, you know, I don't know the answer, I'd have to look for it. Usually they're tied, if it's tied to a site plan, it goes with the site plan because you can't. But I don't recall offhand, I'd have to check now, and I'd bog us down now, I have to go look for it, I don't, but that's a good question, whether, how long the permit goes.
I have a permit for one palm tree removal that
Is it 30 or 60 days?
Is probably seven, eight years old.
Oh, well, that's not
And, and I just, you know, there's still the same reason for the permit, but I just haven't done it yet.
Yeah, I thought there was a timeframe on it, but I, what I'll do is check on that for you, and I can't remember right offhand, because I'm so used to site plans, and it doesn't come across my desk on the other one, so I apologize.
On the condition on waivers, what's been the experience with our tree committee? Any input there?
Well, we really haven't been involved in that permit process. So we, we don't have any experience on that particular trail.
Okay, any recommendations there?
Well, you know, one of the questions, overriding questions that I had about this whole process, and I don't mean to start World War III here, but I just wonder how much uniformity there is between this ordinance and the county ordinance. And the reason I ask that is because people who are involved in the tree care or removal business are supposed to, and that's another issue that we'll get into because we haven't addressed that, and it may not even be part of what is under review here. But the closer that they can be together and similar, it makes the understanding, both on the part of the homeowner, whether they live in city or county, and it has more validity. Because if you're doing things that are directly opposite to what is permitted in the county or vice versa, it's hard to justify on either part. So my whole point was, if the closer we can make them similar, and we went through this when we were working with the city manager on the sign ordinances for the city and the county, when we got into that area, and you'll remember, that was, that was wormy.
We did the same thing in the pill mill area. The county and the city worked in sync and it really worked out well.
It just makes it easier for people to understand. I have not, you know, I get involved with the county ordinance relative to mitigation primarily as a member of the county code enforcement board. And, you know, we have some pretty substantial fines. We had a case within the past three months where somebody was fined $45,000 for a tree removal. And so, you know, I, I really, and again, you've got entirely larger areas to be concerned about that are undeveloped in the county than you do where you can get into trouble by doing clearing. But I just wondered as a basic concept, Tim, I'm not trying to put you
Oh, no, 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 we've answered. The thing is, we have a lot of planted lots, we're developed in the county, if you've got allotted, a lot of records and all that requirement for mitigation, you'd need a permit to cut a tree down, but you don't have to mitigate. That's the, I think that's the major difference in the ordinance. I believe you still need a permit.
In residential area.
In residential areas, so that's the big difference. And I don't think we're ready to move forward to just cut trees down, see that?
No, no.
Yeah, so that is a difference, yeah.
You're saying in the county, you don't have to mitigate on a residential, so
Right.
You can cold cut a residential lot.
Yes, if you wish to go in your backyard, you can cut your trees, burn for fire, what if you needed it?
You don't need a burn permit?
Maybe you need a burn permit, Tim. Big Brother's always there.
But the answer, honey, is, no, I wouldn't have any of it. Well, now, some of the other members may have because of activities that they were involved in as relating to their own employment where they've come in contact with that, but I don't.
Being a Tree City, does that, do we have to come into compliance on certain issues when it comes to our policies here?
No.
Okay.
Tree City doesn't really affect this, this is just an added thing for the Tree City, but
Tree City is more related to promotion and planting and protection within guidelines than it is about being very specific. You'd never get a plan because Tree City is United States, and you can imagine trying
But we, we have that designation in the city, but the county does not, is that correct? Or do they have something like that?
Yeah.
The county does?
Yeah, and most of, the Tree City focuses on public lands and rights away and all that.
There is no Tree City designation for the county. The only one is the city of Irobe. I don't believe Sebastian has done it either yet.
Okay, thank you.
Excuse me, to follow up on that comment, then are the requirements here identical to the requirements for removal? I understand there's no mitigation on the county level, but are the requirements here that are delineated identical or very similar to the county requirements?
Well, I think some of the, like, the designation of the trees, specimen and all that are similar to the county, but we have, since we have mitigation, we have a lot more procedures involved to determine what the mitigation requirement is for the thing.
Nanette, have you had to review the county ordinance in any detail that you might know that?
No, no, I don't know what the county
Yeah, I mean, I
I don't know what the county ordinance has on it.
I don't know, but I think, point out by Carl, is that a lot of it, they're dealing with a lot of green areas and subdivisions are built in there, so they do have requirements when they're built to do that. But we're down to developed areas, so we're dealing with individual lots that have been developed for a while. So it's a different story. And I get back out of this, I mean, the vision plan went through this whole thing to protect the trees. A lot of what we've done since I've been here was to implement the specific recommendations of the vision plan was, we didn't have enough tough regulations, we didn't do this on trees. So that's part of what has driven a lot of that, and work it a while, and then we say, gee, this doesn't work as well, let's see what else we can do. All right.
Well, that raises the question, these, this ordinance seems to be oriented towards the single-family lot or a single parcel, but if we do get into a major subdivision like Dodger Pines, for example, does this apply to that as well?
It would apply to that, yes, and we would make a determination how that would work. I mean, we, we kind of did a preliminary look at that because the heritage, the old heritage preserve thing that kind of fell apart, we did look at that and made calculations. So the development has to meet that, but some, you know, with streets and all that, so we would have to come up to apply this ordinance to that, and we would be done that. But now with the tree canopy and all that, there's different ways that we could apply it. I don't think it's as easy just because we haven't, we don't deal with a lot of subdivisions and
I think it's the point, I'd like to bring up a comment then.
Yeah.
I always try to look at the unintended consequences of things we do here, and I think there are some in this case. For example, if you were a landowner who wanted to become a part of the city and you had a large parcel of land, and you knew this ordinance affected you bringing something into the county, would it help you or hinder you from bringing it into the city for tax revenue? And my answer to that question is, the rules are more difficult, the rules are more draconian, and the situation would be that would probably prohibit for you from doing that because each tree you removed, you'd have to mitigate. Where if you did that and stayed in the county, that would not be the case. If I'm wrong on that, Tim, please identify.
Well, I mean, the current ordinance, you're right to some degree. But remember, the way the ordinance reads now, you do the calculation, then they would be in for waivers on this. I've got a lot of trees. If it wasn't that big a deal, they wouldn't be in for waivers, and it was just a cost to doing business. I think what, so, I mean
We just got rid of the waiver thing, I think it was E, wasn't it?
Well, no, no, that's a different waiver thing, as I said. That's why this ordinance gets away from the waiver thing, just flatly says that, we're gonna look at what the, what the property already has, if it's got a lot of trees, the tree canopy, therefore, that would reduce the mitigation cost. It recognizes that somebody has a lot of trees already on the property, it's a bright line, this is what you're gonna have to do. You know, right now, the way it works is, the waiver thing, I have a lot of trees on my property, Tim, what do you think I have to pay? Okay, I looked, what is, what am I using? You know, I see the trees and, you know, I come with a number and, you know, I've done that a couple of times, and it's, you know, you can come up with all the rationale you want, you still have a problem. That's why I think just a clean numbers, that you know what it's gonna cost you upfront and what you have to do, I think is the best way to go, and you make it consistent for everybody.
Well, a couple of things I think I should note is, exempt from this ordinance, okay?
Correct.
Our schools. So they'll do the right thing because we can trust our schools, right? Indian River Farms, they're exempt from it. The federal government's property is exempt. Golf courses are exempt from this.
Just the golf course.
Pardon me?
Just the golf course, not the country club part of it.
Not around their
It's the design.
Right.
Okay. The power company is exempt from this. The city right of ways are exempt from this. Utility easements for gas and water are exempt for this because they can clear their own right of ways that they want. And the FAA and the airport are all exempt from this ordinance. The only people we're putting this ordinance on basically is businesses and the individual lot owners. The government will always do the right thing, and we won't have to worry about them violating and knocking down any of our trees. So my point, you see where my point's coming, there's, I haven't seen any cold cutting of trees, cold, that's not the right word, clear cutting of trees across, and so I think we should be working with these people to make it as easy as possible, and we're coming up to my next section, which has my main point, and I think if I win that, I'm okay. If not, I'll have a problem. I'll let you go, Tim, keep
Well, no, I just wanted to, I'm not gonna argue with you that, but on, on public lands, they do have to, it's when they're in the right of way and those that it doesn't. But on public lands, they're supposed to, you and I talked about that, they're supposed to get a permit. If they didn't, sometimes public agencies, even your own government, think that they're their own independent little fiefdom and go ahead and do what they want, you know, so that does happen, but they're, it's not supposed to.
And the oversight for them is who? The government?
Me. I'm the person that, that has the responsibility under the code through the manager, you know, obviously, if one of our
And city manager.
Is doing it, I'd be talking to the manager.
Larry, there was a case, I don't know how many years ago, five to eight years ago, where behind the library, west of the library, there was this huge banyan tree in the right of way, and the city came and took it down, and they didn't replace it with a little twig. I don't know what, I don't know what the deal was there.
I'm not so far, I mean
Remember that, Carl?
I believe our city does an awful lot to preserve the trees, and I recognize that. That's one of the reasons I live here is because of all the trees, so, and I like the greenery, et cetera. I think where I'm coming to is that when you have an individual lot, I think the person, in my opinion, and this is my main point, has the right to place their house on the property as they see fit. It's, they paid for it, they're paying the taxes on it, et cetera. They should be able to place the house in the property. Those trees that fall within the house perimeter should not have to mitigate those trees to take them out. They should be exempt from anything. Any trees beyond its discretionary call, beyond the house parameters, is what we mitigate, and therefore, we don't mitigate what your house is. You didn't buy the lot to save trees, you bought the house to live on the lot. The trees are a supplement to that, and what we're doing is, we're, I think, I also think that, that this tax, and that's what I'm calling this mitigation as a tax, is regressive. If I own, if I'm buying a lot in the new Rio Mar subdivision, I believe those lots are gonna be selling for $800,000, and if I have an $8,000 mitigation, that's 1% of that cost. On the other hand, if I'm trying to buy a lot in original town, and the lot is 30,000, I have the same tree or several trees on a much smaller lot, it's a 26% tax on that person. Plus the fees and things that you talked about, Mark, which were the, if you need the landscaping plan, the time and effort to go into it. And the person over on the island that's buying an 800,000 lot, he has somebody delegates that to. The person trying to refurbish the house on the small lot in original town or one of the other ones over there, I think he has a much more difficult time making that happen because he's his own person, he's doing all these steps by himself. At least, that's my perception. So I believe the burden, there needs to be some mitigation on our part. Either we do it by negating, and a smaller lot also, any tree on a smaller lot, when you have a 70-foot wide lot that's 100 foot, 220 foot deep, he's gonna have a tree in a problem. If you're buying a quarter acre or larger lot, half acre like you have in some of these other places, you can more likely move your house around a lot more to find a way to get the house on the lot. And I expect us to do that. I think that's prudent by anybody building a home, that they should try to maneuver their house to save any specimen-type trees. So there's where I am. And I know that small numbers in these less expensive communities are big deals. I know that a community that I worked in, when we forced the community to put brick to grade on, some people didn't make it. One of the communities in Prince George's County, Maryland, required the people to sod their lawns as opposed to seeding their lawns, made a big difference to the person. Up there, you can throw seed out in the north, and it grows like crazy. This county required you to sod your lawn because they wanted all nice lawns. And paved driveways, the same thing. Poor areas get the worst of this, and we have some places here in Vero Beach, and this is my speech, if you're not sure. We have some places here in Vero Beach that we need to work on, communities we need to help. And I think some of these things are too difficult for them, and I think we ought to give some mitigation for where the house goes can be released, and I think in the smaller lots in particular, that will eliminate most of these people having to pay this mitigation. pay this mitigation. And that's my point. Now, I know a couple of my colleagues up here are going to-
Can I ask some questions of you, Larry, so I know, so everybody knows? When you say the build-up area, are you talking about what, like in here, anything within the setbacks, the principal building?
The term I used to use, which I'm most familiar with, which I can define pretty easily, is the building envelope. Whatever the building envelope, they're allowed to remove the trees in their building envelope. It's only the discretionary trees that beyond the building envelope, which gives the 10 feet in the side yards, 25 feet to the rear, I believe, and what is it, 20?
Well, you're talking about the setbacks. So you mean where you can put the principal building on the site? That whole area? Okay.
And that would be even specimen trees and protected trees?
The reason for buying the lot was to build the house. If it was to protect the trees, we should be looking at something else, you know? And some of the lots are, he doesn't have the choice of moving the tree on the lot, which is probably the more expensive way to go than to try to put, where does he put all those trees? On a small lot in a small town area, you don't have a place to put those trees. You can't move to the front yard. 70-foot wide, your house is what? 45-foot wide? So you see what, you have 10-foot on each side? I think it's, I think if we exempt that, we exempt a lot of the people that are at the bottom of the scale, that are trying to find the house and get on the lot without adding this cost to them. The house in Reamar that are in 800,000 lots, hey, you know, I feel, I don't think they should have to, I think they should still have the same exemption, but I don't feel as bad. Let's put it that way. 1% of the lot. Sorry. Go ahead.
Mr. Chairman, I'd just like to ask Nanette to go to the microphone-
Okay.
And share with all of you the discussion we had with her on our meeting, because she's come across what we believe is probably the champion live oak tree size-wise in the city of Vero Beach. It's not the one that we currently have on the website. And she's going to tell you about how it is located on the lot that she found it on.
We had to go over on 22nd Avenue and do a little bit of abatement in a house. Next door was an empty lot that had had a house on it that had been torn down. And we just looked over there and saw a very large oak, walked over and the most incredible oak tree, just from this side to this side and from front to back, was this canopy. I don't know how the house that was there before was there, but there was a house there. I guess it was rather small. So we went over and measured it. It was 17 feet, 1 inch in diameter at breast height. And it is just the most perfect canopy, balanced. It's just a magnificent tree. And we were commenting on the fact, if anybody bought that lot and wanted to build a house there, that tree would probably have to be removed because it's right in the middle.
Either that or you'd design a house with that as the patio-
Right, a circular house, exactly.
Exactly.
But you know-
And it would be one story.
And I don't know that there's a lot of areas that are like that, but, you know, it was just something that we talked about.
Just support your position, Mr. Chairman.
Well, there's a lot down the street from me, a quarter acre lot with a huge oak tree smack dab in the center of the lot. And it's huge. I don't know whether it's that big or not, but it's really, it's really big.
If I could just say something. My work, I'm general manager for a landscape company, and we move incredibly large oak trees all the time. The cost of the crane and the labor to root prune, and you're talking about $3,000 or $4,000 at the most. Golf courses, you know, we haven't come across a tree that is too large not to move. So my position would be just, my wife is a teacher at Beechhill Elementary, and they just bulldozed live oaks. We would have volunteered the labor to root prune those trees. And we use cranes all the time to move trees. And we could have worked in the cost of that crane just to swing by there and move the trees to a different location on the school just to save those trees. So to give someone the power just to cut down a tree that's been there for 300 years so they can build their house when an alternative route could be found through a company like myself or another one that would donate the time or whatever to save that tree, I have a problem with that.
I think something like this is if you're out there shopping for a piece of property to build a house, you wouldn't be looking to have a tree like that smack in the middle of it.
I would agree with that.
So you would look at a different piece of property.
But there are some people who already own a piece of property and then we slap this ordinance on top.
Now they can't sell their-
Or they don't know the ordinance when they buy it.
Right.
You know, they-
Spider beware.
Well, I assume, but, I mean, this house down the street, this lot down the street from me sold for $395,000, I think. And if all of a sudden, it's unbuildable. Now, I appreciate your offer, but, you know, getting somebody to donate the labor is one thing and paying for it is another. I'm kind of surprised at your $3,000 max figure.
Well, ballpark, on average.
This sounds pretty big.
Yeah, well.
Did you say 17-foot in diameter or circumference? She said diameter.
Oh, circumference.
Circumference.
Oh.
I just go.
Yeah, that's right, because Monty and I did the, we did the calculation based on the circumference.
The trunk was 17 feet?
Yeah.
Oh, man.
Yeah. The one we have on the website, which is Chris Rungy's tree, is-
I saw that.
But it wasn't, it isn't that big.
14.
628 pi r squared. We'd calculated the diameter. Monty and I were doing the calculations. I forgot. It's big, but I was looking to replace it. Let's say they couldn't do it. It'd be, what do we use? $75 per inch. So I forgot. That still comes up to a lot of money. I think it was like $8,000, $9,000. I can't remember what we had. But, I mean, there's an issue there. Now, if you can relocate off the site, it could be done. They could maybe negotiate that. But the thing you want, you couldn't get to a position, there's where the tree itself would be a taking for us to say you can't develop the property because of the tree. But, you know, you couldn't really deny them taking the tree down. The point is, we'd love to save the tree, so you need to figure out some other ways. So I think part of it is the relocation would help. Because do you really want them to cut the tree down even if they could do it?
Well, in Osceola Park, though, a $4,000 tree charge might be a taking.
Well, I think, I mean, that's a point. I'm, I'm looking over there.
Well, I was just going to say that Tim's right. I mean, if you've taken away all economically beneficial use of the property, you've got a taking situation.
So, I mean, the point is, are we trying to facilitate their taking the tree? And we're not trying to prevent, you know, looking at what Larry's bringing, Mr. Lawford, I apologize, be too familiar with you. And, I mean, and I hate to bring this up, because Peggy and I talked, and said, shut your mouth, Tim. But we could, I mean, we could have a maximum threshold that we set, at least on the dollar amount they would pay in mitigation for these small properties. I took a look before the meeting, for instance, properties on the Barrier Island, on cheap properties, well, I don't mean cheap, but I mean, inexpensive, they're not in the water, you're talking about $120,000 for a property that's about 12,000, quarter of an acre.
You made a list of those.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's his lot to buy.
But, I mean, other properties, you get over like in Seagrape, you're talking about for a little bigger, they're going to be $350,000. And you get in a Reamar, or you get anybody in the water, you're up at 800 over a million. Okay? You get into the town, like in Osceola Park and that, we're down in the 16,014. So clearly, where you have a tree that has to be removed, and even with our formula, you're still going to have some, you know, we could set a limit based on the value of the land. I didn't want to bring it up, but that's the way to go. The thing is, before, caution is, I would like to look into that a little more on what Mr. Lawford is bringing up and looking at some examples. I mean, I can understand when they're first developing a property, but do you really want to give them carte blanche after that to start cutting other trees down within that area? I mean, I don't know if that's a good public, you know, without doing some sort of mitigation for that.
Let me ask Peggy, isn't this the kind of thing where the law has to apply equally throughout without regard to a property being more expensive and-
That's why I wanted, I caution, Tim, please, this was 10 minutes before the meeting. I didn't have a chance to look at it.
She would have to look at that. I mean-
So, yeah, I, thank you.
But if you had a 5% cap, that would apply-
Well, you would have to, I mean, the cap would be on everybody. The point is, it would, if you had an expensive piece of property, the cap would be much higher than it is on the thing.
Plus, we know this is a regulatory fee. It's not really a tax. You have to be careful when you throw that around.
I just like the term tax.
A regulatory fee.
But what I would prefer, if you're really concerned about this, is that, well, we just have a process where we have a, what we call it, an economic hardship thing, that we would look at that in a quasi-dedicial hearing. Go with the ordinance, we could put up a process that would look at that, and you can make a decision on that. That would give, on that, where you raise, that would be, we could have some thresholds that you would have to look at that you could, therefore, we're treating all the property. The only time is if there's a hardship, and a lot of ordinances do have hardships.
Tim, the other way, without going back to the quasi-dedicial rigmarole we have to go through, if you granted the person the exemption because of this one big tree, much as I would not want to see that come true, but if it's your lot and you're trying to build your house, do you say, I'm going to sleep in a tent in the front now because I can't take the tree down? No. The reason is, a tree has to come down. Somebody would buy that lot. There's somebody will come up in this town and say, before you take them, now buy that lot for, and save it. I may even throw 10 bucks into that myself. But the point being that, I think, if we give them the right-of-way to where the house can be placed within the envelope, I think if we take that exemption, we eliminate a lot of these problems and give the homeowner the right to use the land to build a reasonable proximity. If that's an exemption, we've eliminated a lot of the necessity for this. And we go hard after the people that are discretionarily taking down trees beyond the perimeter of the house. And that's my proposal, and I'm hoping to get that in.
Well, I think it's important to also look at exceptions to that because champion trees, specimen trees, I think they're different. And I think that, you know, if somebody has a piece of property, it's kind of a philosophical thing, the way I see it. Like, if somebody has a riverfront property, you know, there's value because of the river. And we don't start changing things around for them. But if somebody buys a piece of property with a tree on it, there's value because of the tree.
Oh, I totally agree.
So depending on the size, I think we need to be careful about that.
What if we said this? What if we, what if the person had to take the footprint of their house? And part of that, on every house that came in, they had to bring their home there, the footprint of the home they've designed, and go over, have an opportunity to go over it a little bit to see if you can modify or move it to the left a little bit or a little bit to the right? You know, I was in a town where the side yard setback was 10 feet. That's what it was. But if you had a tree on the other side, as long as a neighbor on the opposite side, you could move it to 8 feet and save the 2 foot and let the tree be. And those are the flexibilities that came. And as soon as you do that, then we move into more paper generation, okay? And that's what we're trying to avoid here in some cases. So it's kind of like-
Well, remember, when somebody comes in with their, they come in with their site plan, we will work with them to try to avoid trees. They have to show that they're, that's the first, you just can't-
Maybe we leave that part of it in the-
Well, we do. It's still left in there. They have to show they've done all reasonable accommodation for the trees and sites. So our staff has worked with them, and we've changed site plans, as we explained to you before, to save trees. So they have to do that before they even get to the mitigation part.
But then there's no mitigation if they've done that effectively.
No, I understand what you're-
We eliminate the mitigation, at least not to have the penalty, because they have to pay to take the tree down to start with.
Just a question, and maybe a very basic one, and that is, because we weren't part of the discussion that got you to the point where you're talking mitigation, why? What's the nexus for the whole mitigation issue as opposed to the kind of approach that Larry was talking about, which is the building envelope, a set of fines that are pretty high for taking down trees without permission, and respecting personal property rights, which is essentially what Larry's basic argument is as far as the approach. Because if we're really interested in redevelopment within the city of Vero Beach, which is good, because as property is redeveloped, when it comes back on the tax roll, it has more value, produces more tax revenue, why have this prohibitive administrative expense called mitigation for tree canopy? As long as the basic canopy that's not a part of the footprint of the house is not disturbed.
Well, I'm not going to, we do have more penalties for cutting trees down without a permit. Yeah. We have those penalties. But no, getting back, that's a philosophical thing. I mean-
See, I'm not negative on mitigation.
No.
I'm really not. The maximum mitigation, you're causing consternation on some people as opposed to, not everybody's subject to the same mitigation.
Well, and that's why I suggest that we'd have a provision to go to a quasi-dedicial hearing if the cost, you know, is a hardship, if that gets to that. I mean, the other thing is, what Larry, and let's get back to what he was saying, it is, well, no, that's why we would go into of the land value in that. We would have to have, it requires us, you're exactly right, it requires us to have some good criteria to get into that. What is economic? That's always a problem.
To me, might not be a hardship to you.
But so, we would probably use the size of the lot, the value of the lot would be the, it would be different type of hardship we'd look at. But let me get him back to what, so we, I understand. What I proposed in mine is basically anything within that building area, the setbacks and all that, where you can put the principal building, you would get whatever, your tree cover, existing canopy, you could reduce those mitigation based on. That takes into account what Larry's saying, and everything else around that in the setbacks where you could put accessory, you'd be paying full freight for that mitigation because you could avoid that. And what Larry's saying, you'd basically, within that building footprint area, you'd be exempt. Everybody'd be exempt. You could do that. You wouldn't have to mitigate. However, everything around that, if you did, you would still have to mitigate any of those, those kind of, those trees.
But that gets, but when you do that, then you lose that option of saying to the homeowner and saying, well, let's move this house a little bit here, a little bit there to save a tree.
Yeah. She's right.
But before, before, you're, see, that's the key. You've got the missing link that you want to have them do as much as they can before you grant them the-
Right.
The-
The carte blanche.
Yes. And if, and if some modification to the house would allow, in my own home, there's one tree branch that goes over my house because I like the big oaks I have in my yard. And I moved mine back. There's a little, just to save that tree. And that's because the city made me do it. I didn't want to cut that big branch off there. Now I do, but then I didn't, okay? But the point being, I did it because it was good for the tree and for me at the time.
Well, there was that case on Poitras where the guy, he did everything, he was even talking about having a courtyard home where the tree would be in the middle of the courtyard, but the courtyard couldn't be big enough to not damage this big tree. And it gets crazy at some point. But are you saying that you can have a house, a footprint of a house, and there's no mitigation there, but if you want a pool on the back, then you got to fully mitigate those tree removals? Or what are we saying?
The pool would have to be within that buildable area.
It has to be in the buildable area.
So he's requiring you to keep it in there if you want to have none. You understand not to pay mitigation.
So the only trees you need are in the setbacks? Or the only trees you need to mitigate are in the setbacks?
The tree, all the perimeter trees and the back of the yard and the front of the yard would be full mitigation if you took any of those down. Now, there's one other point I want to bring up to you. A lot of the homes that we're building now, especially on the Barrier Island, are what we're calling razed because of the new elevations we have to have.
Right.
Now, this brings, I think, a whole other question into our argument about mitigation. The trees were, they didn't know about this law, so they grew at the level they are, okay? And now that we're going to, how are we going to handle that? Because the new homes have to be 6 feet higher. Now, do we make, is that person now responsible for taking all those trees and mitigating very large trees?
Well, I've not used-
Tim, that would be within a variance provision. That would not be something that they cause themselves.
Well, no, it could be, it could be, yeah, that's true. We haven't talked about-
Can they be welded, successfully?
Yes, you can.
Successfully. Because you, our ordinance says, if the tree dies after you weld it and everything, you're responsible for it for a year. So when it dies, now you mitigate it after you weld it and spend all this money on it. I'm just saying, I'm out there being trying to be both sides. I want the green city, but I don't want to be-
I just haven't noticed that problem on these properties on the coast that are the ones that have to go up the extra 6 feet or whatever in the FDEP property. I get more complaints, they're too big, just because they put it all on the developable part of the property and even though the whole property all the way to mean high water can be, it's in that. So that's not really been that much of an issue, yeah.
I think we should look at all of it before we make our decision. I think we should look at all of it before we make our decision.
Okay, I mean, that's...
These are things I thought of trying to, as I went through this, because I have an interest in this.
Okay, I have another question, about the tree fund. If somebody decides, "Okay, I'm not going to mitigate, but I'm going to put, pay instead, put the money in..."
And that's what most people do.
Yeah. So, could that money be used in these hardship cases, for mitigation? If we could just define hardship.
If that particular lot that's...
Yeah, we can't do... I mean, how does that work?
Well, let me, let me tell you how the law works. If this imposition of a regulatory fee, and that's pursuant to our police power, so that's how we get that ability, it's an exercise of sovereign function of municipalities, and as long as that fee is reasonable, which is what Tim is trying to come up with, and it doesn't exceed the cost of regulation, and the proceeds are used for the purpose for which they were imposed, that's a very important finding, then they found the fees valid, the courts have found the fees valid, and not a tax.
So, could we use the money to buy that lot with this perfect specimen tree on it, for as public, because it was a public good, could we...
Well, if it becomes a public lot, I guess...
No, but it's a private lot, if we make it public by buying the lot and put it in the public domain, to save that specimen tree, the best one in the city.
Be a public benefit.
It'd be a public benefit if the public owns it.
So, therefore, I think what you suggested, we could do, and it would be, you're thinking it would be legal.
I'm not sure what the tree fund, do you have rules and regulations, Nanette, that regulate the tree fund?
We use it to, we use it to plant trees on public property.
He's talking about buying a lot.
No, no, no.
To protect a tree.
Yeah, I understand, Mark, we've never done that.
There a statement in your tree fund that says what it's to be used for? I mean, I don't know if going that far would be a valid use.
The tennis, an...
And we were talking about the tax roll, it takes it off the tax roll.
We can only use those funds to buy and have trees planted on city property, period.
Not to buy the property to put the tree on.
And it becomes city property.
Do you have admission statement or something?
I have, I have the code, what it says. Okay, "All amounts paid into the fund should be reserved solely for the purchase, installation, and maintenance of trees and palms on public property." I don't think it has the acquisition of public property as one of the purposes. Whether we could legally do that, I guess we can change...
I was talking about, if a quarter acre lot, an owner of a quarter acre lot needs to take down a tree, but it's 27%, you know, as opposed to somebody with a larger lot, if, if they could use some of that tax, or that tree fund money to mitigate, put the trees on a public...
On private, private, yeah, we get, yeah.
You'd be mixing public and private.
And how do you define hardship here and not there? And you've set a precedent, and...
Right, and then where's your consensus?
Well, you've done that before, you've mitigated private trees onto public property.
Yeah, that's what I, do that.
Yeah, but, we've moved private trees on a public property, okay? But it's different to have money into a tax to do that, yeah, and they were given, a lot of it, but it's a little different when you're using money that goes into this fund for these trees, to use that on somebody's private property.
No, no, not put them on their property.
But to move the...
No, no, if somebody, say I had a big tree, I have a quarter acre lot...
Well, let's look at this chance, see if we can move this, let's say we could.
Let's not talk about moving, just, it's going to cost that person with a quarter acre lot $10,000, to mitigate.
I...
But there's $10,000 in the tree fund, and we decide, "Okay, we'll give you 50% of it, and as long as those trees, that 50%, is used for trees to go on public land."
But the mitigation fund is already the funds that went in there, you're saying to pay for their share of the mitigation, then essentially we come up with a negative, it doesn't add it to me, I don't think that works just from the logic, I know what you're trying to do.
I've got that 50-foot seagrave.
I think, I'm sorry, wrong.
Okay.
Oh, no, I understand where you're trying to, you know, I think it's better to work out some public thing, where the, where, well, I don't know what to do, I mean, we're dealing with, I think we need to look at some examples of this, that's our big problem here, we're, to look at that, and I'd be willing to do a little more work in that area for that.
I think that example, I don't know how centered that huge tree is, but the one on my street is, is a good example, too, and presumably that's higher value.
Well, I mean, the question is, how many of those situations are? That's why I was suggesting to have a process, that we would handle that maybe individually, and we could do that, I mean, rather than try to have a regulations that fits every situation, because that's always a problem, even from a legal standpoint, we don't have.
But in order to avoid Larry's unintended consequences, it might be worthwhile to take a look at a couple of examples.
Well, no, I don't have a, I think that's not a bad idea, that, in fact, I was even willing to take, what I want to do is take what this, what I proposed in here, to look at some of, apply it to some of these properties. So you had a better, that you could have some real world things that have come into our office, so you could see how it applies, and whether it's fair or not, and we could look at some of these, kind of, on these small lot circumstances, and see what that means. Then I think we all have at least some information, you know, some actual numbers that we're looking at.
Now's the time to give Tim the couple kudos I was holding back. I do think you're...
You just slammed Mike.
I do think you're moving in the right direction.
Okay, well, that's good, I like that.
And I really, so, I'm not, I'm, is it okay, Joe, to give a now, it's only just a second?
Yeah, delighted to have you even bring it up.
That's true, I agree.
Take your time, Larry.
I'll save it for the end.
And, you know what, I, I don't know how the, I'm not getting a, I'm worried about you, and I'm not sure whether they've accepted the idea of giving that relief to the envelope or not.
Yeah, you may not...
Because I think that's the key to what we've been discussing here, do you give it to them or not? Because it's either or or not, I don't think we can go halfway on that, or try...
Well, why don't we look at some real world situations, and then you can, you have a better, before we go, you know, and then at least you have, you can make some decisions based on some real world application of this, okay? I mean, I don't have a problem working on a few more of those for you.
And also, talk with Nanette about what's actually workable.
Yes, I mean, one of the things I looked at was, you know, giving more credit where they keep a tree on site, or even replacement trees, rather than, you know, so we're not, you know, just paying into a fund, that means keeps more trees, but I didn't want to complicate this anymore, and that's why I didn't do it, but let us take a look at this, and I'll talk to Nanette, maybe we can come up with something that we, that you all can look at, and that might help us in moving forward on this. Even though we may have a difference right now on the board, this is going to be applied. If that's, if that's all right, you're druthers, I mean, I'm...
I just don't want to see Vero look like other Florida towns.
Sure.
And that's what I see when you, when you drive south, it's perimeter plantings, and that's it. That's all you get. You go to Naples, and it's all perimeter planting, so the trees are gone.
What's that way in the county, you got roost touching, and two little twigs out front.
But we're not the county.
It'll look like everybody else.
Yeah, and that's the point, I mean, you want to keep Vero, Vero, I mean, there's something about that, and I think that has to be taken into account on this thing, but I can understand what Mr. Lauffer's saying, that we, it needs to be fair, I don't, you know, I think part of this is a responsibility, you know, that's the way we have mitigation, the question is, where's the balancing act between the public interest and the private property interest, and that's what we're trying to do here.
I was going to ask Nanette, Nanette, my, one of the thoughts I have is, when you go into, I'm using Riemar as my example at times, because I'm very close to that, and if the Riemar canopy, over all the years, has never been disturbed, because the people were conscientious about saving the tree, and the homes are smaller, even though we've got a lot of new and much larger homes in there, there's been a lot of people do a lot of things to save that. But my belief is that in Riemar, one of our fears I have for us, and it can be other places also, when you have a lot of all older trees, and we get a blight, or a timeframe passes past their peak, if we're not putting the smaller three inch trees in among some of the bigger trees, all of a sudden, we have a lot of years till we get back to having a canopy. And one of the definitions I learned was a definition that they, we used in the state of Maryland, when I was doing work there, is that the definition of a forest, and this is Maryland's definition of a forest, was a group of trees unrelated, not necessarily related, in different stages of their life. And part, that was just part of the definition, by the way, and I've redefined it, because I forgot half of what it was, so. But the point I'm trying to get to is that, planting some of these other trees on new lots and things, makes the canopy varied, and somewhat, they're not all aging at the same time. That's what I fear is in Riemar, if we had a blight, and through these older, more weakened trees, may, may look us like, the place you don't want to see down south, may look like it when they all die, just like we lost the one, some kind of bay oak, we lost a lot of our bay oaks. Now, if you have all bay oaks in your yard, and you got that, we don't have a mix, and we need to blend, and to offset, and different sizes and shapes to figure it, and I think some of that's what's coming, when you let the people put their house, they'll plant the trees the most appropriate for them on their lot after that, as opposed to leaving trees where they shouldn't be, and I see some positives here into letting them take down some trees that are too close to the house, because later on, they're going to do it anyhow if it's too close, so. I'm sorry, I've had more in my time, I think, but...
Did you want to say something?
Well, I think that the points are valid, when we were looking at, just for instance, dedicatory trees, we had always been, in the past, looking at live oaks, and we do have somewhat of a monoculture, as gorgeous as the live oaks are, if there were something that came in, whether it was an insect, or a fungus, certainly, we see things that are just completely wiped out, and then you're left pretty much treeless. So there absolutely is a very good effect of having a diverse tree canopy. When you have, though, a lot where you have, let's say, three live oaks, it's hard to put other trees in that are going to thrive in, when they need full sun, too. So if you can pick and choose maybe something that is too close to the house, that's going to not thrive, because now you've had to damage the roots, or, or an oak that's been damaged before by a hurricane, that has big limbs that have been ripped off, those would be good candidates to remove from the landscape, so you can put something back in that gives you that diversity. And it's diversity that, it's not only so that you aren't left with no canopy if something does happen, but as your definition of a forest, trees work together, so you have symbiotic things that happen, when, when there's this tree that fixes nitrogen, or into the, into the ground, that then feeds this tree, and you get that forest thing going on, or if you want to add something in that's flowering, to have that visual interest in the landscape, so, certainly, diversity is great, but, you know, you don't want to go in, and, like on this lot, where you've got 17 inches circumference oak, and cut it down, because I want to plant, you know, a handful of other things, so, it, it does take thoughtfulness in, in planning, because what you're doing is going to be there for, you know, many generations.
My seagrape is destroying my live oak.
Oh, gee.
And that's more protected than the live oak is, according to this, according to our ordinance.
It's more protected because of the diameter?
No, because it's, it's one level above, it's a, the seagrape is one class, and the live oak is one class lower.
Is it shadowing it, shading it?
Yeah, it's, it's eating.
Hire somebody to prune your tree.
Yes.
Well, I can trim it.
You don't even need a certified arborist.
I'm surprised you're not bringing your sable palms up again.
Tim, where are we? The garbage palm? Where are we on moving forward with this, Ar?
Well, I think I need a vacation. No, what I was going to say, I'd like to get to the boarding house today, before the end of the day, would you want to go some more into this? I mean, it looks like we're going to have to continue working on this, and come back.
Yeah, let's, let's talk a little bit more, yeah.
Not on this yet, or...
Or come back on it, because you wanted to develop it a little bit more. I do have one question on page seven.
I think Tim has got plenty of ideas now, from all the discussion we've had on this subject here, and a lot of good ones, by the way, and recognizes that there's a few things that still needs to be looked at, I'm sure he already understood that anyway, but I hope he's been taking notes.
Could I, could I just bring up one thing on page seven?
Sure, go ahead.
When we're talking about the mitigation requirements.
Yes.
Just under B1, you talk about the front, rear, and side yard setbacks for the principal buildings, well, some of these properties in the city have additional structures on there, a garage, a separate garage, a cabana, those kinds of things.
Well, it's got to be within the principal setback.
Yeah, I was wondering, just, you know, do we not consider that at all?
No, what I'm saying, this is getting back to what Mr. Lauffer's thing is, anything, we do consider those, but the, the way this formula, it only, they would hit anything that's outside, within those setbacks, meaning towards the side yard, or the rear yard, or whatever, they would be, have to pay the full mitigation, you'd have to mitigate this fully. Anything within the building area, then would have this reduction through the canopy size, or Mr. Lauffer's zero percentage.
What, Tim, what happens with a tree in the right of way?
What, what happens to it? What do you mean, what happens?
I mean, do you have to mitigate a tree in the right of way?
No, it's not your responsibility in right of way.
Right away.
That's where my live oak is.
And you can't take credit for it, either.
Okay, I know.
Okay, so...
Okay, so, what I'm going to do is work on, what I'm going to do is take a look at this, I'm not going to really mess a lot with the language, but I think what we need is to look at a couple options, look at the options, and get some real world cases that I can go through and show you, okay, and then we can discuss it more.
I think, well, the board and the other people here, from the beautification committee, can digest this a little bit, think about it, maybe, you know, some of the answers need some more modification, more work, and some tweaking, maybe we can get something that's better than we have now, and maybe not. Do we officially have to close one workshop, then open the next one?
I don't think so.
We do not, we can just move from discussion, so.
Thank you.
You're welcome to stay, beautification committee.
Thank you very much.
Fine day.
Thanks for coming, and Daniel, thank you for your kind offer.
Thank you.
Yeah. I love what you're doing.
Some people would like to get them... Tim, you're on again, I...
Yes.
More unified than the next one.
Let's hope so. All right, I hope you had a chance to go over, I went over all the legal issues with, with this thing, and right now, as the attorney and I explained the last meeting, we got some real issues with the boarding house, and as it's just based on the number of unrelated people living, that creates a lot of constitutional issues, I don't want to have to go into all that, it also creates issues about, has nothing to do with how the place is run, it just has to do with the relationships of people, which is hardly something you would use to define a use in an ordinance, so that does create problems, especially when you have other provisions in the ordinance that conflict with that. The other thing that we looked at, too, the other thing was, and also dealing with the protected class of people, the disabled, under the Fair Housing Act, the American for Disability Act, and that, we have to take into account that, and certainly, when you deal with unrelated people, and that's in our, all these definitions, you get into those issues, so, what we did is try to address those straight on, and in our revised, proposed revisions, we also wanted to make sure that we can enforce the provisions of this, so I'm going to go through the changes we made, on each one, and the last page, on, first page, on the proposed revisions, and just discuss those one by one as we go through, if that's all right.
Before you do that, Tim, I was terribly confused before, and I'm still terribly confused, about all these different designations, and I had written them down before, but you've got boarding house, you've got vacation rentals, you've got short term rentals, you've got...
But we don't have vacation and short term not in here, we're not dealing with those issues right now.
I know, but what's the difference?
Because a boarding house, unless it's operated, I mean, it, let's get into it, the bottom line we use for transit residential types can only be in commercial districts, under our ordinance, because that's how we've defined it, which means, and we define that as anything less than 30 days, okay? So it's pretty clear, a boarding house could be run less than 30, it'd be in violation of our, of that ordinance, or you could have multiple people living there for long periods of time, so the question is, is that violating our ordinance? And that's why we're revising this, so we have some specific language we can go in and deal with, with these issues. And, and, does that help you a little? I mean, that's...
It doesn't differentiate between my mind, between a vacation rental and a boarding house.
Well, because a boarding house could also be run like a vacation rental, it could have people moving in and out every one week, that would be...
But neither of them are allowed in single family, are they? But neither of them are allowed in a single-family, are they?
Well, neither, none of these are allowed in our residential zones. Okay, transit residential is not allowed in our residential zones by law. A boarding house, we have this crazy definition, is the problem we have.
Yeah.
That's what we're getting at, and that's why we had to address it. Because as explained, when we went out dealing with this one woman, there are probably others, in her place, she had three or four renters out of her four renters, but she was running it similar to a single-family house. We didn't really, when you question whether we legally or fairly should call it a boarding house, because it has more than three unrelated people, it calls into a lot of households that don't, that have that, that live together. The modern family is not, a lot of times, married, and they're all related, they may have extended people in there that are not related, I mean, so.
And you may want to lock the one guy out, you know?
Exactly. So basically, when.
If they're just living there, you know who.
Our problem was, when we said that the unrelated thing wasn't legal in constitution, we had to look at, are they running it like a dwelling, one dwelling in a single-family? We couldn't find enough in there to say they weren't. I mean, they were showing leases, now they could have falsified those. I mean, they were more than short-term. They were showing they weren't short-term, but they were probably, easily could have been, person didn't even have to, there wasn't any, shall we say, penalties in the leases. They wouldn't, they didn't even meet the standard lease for the state of Florida, let's put it that way. So we need to have some more specific description, the characteristics of a boarding house that we felt that would stand up under, you know, legally, a legal challenge. And that's what we try to do here. And one that we could enforce. So basically, that's what we've done. And so I just want to go through and discuss that with you. So the first thing on boarding house is, it's a dwelling unit. We're not talking about multifamily. A dwelling unit is a unit. So when you get back to what a dwelling unit is, it's operated as an integrated household unit with all these provisions, particularly having a common kitchen facilities for all the people.
That's the key.
And that's the key, and I'll go into that later. So we took a definition, we've looked at various ordinances, come up with this. So we've come up with a dwelling unit used, maintained, or advertised. Now, we're able, remember, I told you, we can't do this on vacation rentals and put some specific language. We did it here. So we can go after somebody that's advertising for multiple people, if we know they have multiple people in the property, as a violation. As a place with more than one individual room or suite is offered for the use by one or more individuals for sleeping or living accommodation, rent, or other compensation, which allows you, as a homeowner, to rent out a room, or multiple rooms to, you know, connecting rooms to that. So we feel, you know, basically feel that everybody has that right, that they should be able to do that.
That's legal.
When you go beyond that, if you have, let's say, two rooms that you're renting out to separate individuals, they have locks, that clearly then becomes a boarding house. You see what I'm saying? So for us, it's a much easier litmus test to go through on that.
I'm very sorry, I'm still confused. Is a boarding house, are you saying a boarding house is not allowed, and we're just trying to determine the threshold at which point it becomes a boarding house?
Yes, a boarding house is prohibited. In fact, if you look in our ordinance, it says it's prohibited, but there's nowhere in the ordinance you can find it. Okay? So what we're doing is trying to find what is a boarding house, and that is the definition of what's prohibited.
And I can, in my little, single-family neighborhood, rent out one of my rooms to Joe Blow off the street.
Yeah, as long as Joe Blow is a more than 30-day stay there, sure, you can.
I didn't realize that.
Well, you could, there's nothing that says you can't do it now, but this is, this is being, this is just to be.
Next month's mortgage not paid.
But then if there's two.
If it's two, let's say you have two different, yes.
And that's only in a commercial zone.
We don't even talk about boarding houses in a commercial.
What if it's Joe and Jamie?
No, it's defined, but we don't have, we don't list it as a permitted use. No, we haven't. We have not done that yet. That's something we'll talk about. I'm just trying to get to the definition. Right now, our big concern isn't, I mean, if they're in a commercial zone, where you have hotels and stuff, I'm not too worried about it. Okay? What to worry about is in a, in a, in a single-family, or, they could probably even be allowed in multifamily without a problem. But we haven't, we're not talking about, right now, we're trying to protect the single-family neighborhoods, that's where our issues are. Okay?
It is hard to understand, believe me. I have empathy for Mark.
Okay, so you're saying we can, you can rent one room to.
Or a suite of rooms.
Suite.
A suite.
To one person.
Or individuals, a group.
What about an air quotes, "couple"?
Yes.
Or a family?
Yeah, you could do it to a family, yes.
Okay, so you can now have two families.
Okay, but we haven't gone, okay.
In a single-family neighborhood.
Okay, we haven't gone to the definition of dwelling unit, where I put in some more stuff. Okay, so we just dealt with that threshold. So we use the term dwelling unit for a boarding house. So they have to meet that. So you go down to dwelling unit and see how we've redefined that, and we got rid of a lot of language that really didn't talk about the dwelling unit, but we talked about independent facility. Each area, the last line is the critical thing. Each area with separate facilities for preparation, storage, and keeping of food for consumption within the dwelling that is not available and accessible to all individuals of the building should be deemed a dwelling unit.
I thought we weren't allowed to have two kitchens.
Yeah. Well, did I write this properly?
Yeah, it is.
Did I do it the wrong way?
Yeah, it's there.
Oh, no, shall be deemed a dwelling unit. So every area you have separate. So what you get into, we don't allow you to have a kitchen, like a 220-volt and all that, and other places in the house. But you'll see where people, for instance, in these boarding house situations, they're going to put a refrigerator in there, you're going to have a sink, a microwave, and these people have a lock thing, they're not using the kitchen that everybody else is, they're living a separate thing. This is a critical in here to do that. But it doesn't eliminate, and why I put the language "not available and accessible to all individuals," summer kitchens in the big houses, I want to be sure you can do that, because that is not intended to be set up as a separate living area. You see what I'm saying? That's why we said it's not accessible.
Independent unit.
Okay? I try to take care of that. So when you're looking at the boarding house, it's got to be run like a unit. So if they're doing, for instance, and we've got this in this situation, where they have, and they advertise it, independent microwave, this, this, you have an outdoor grill, it's all a separate area and that, you don't even, if you're single, ah, you don't have to go in that kitchen. They're probably, you know, living in that unit. That creates, and that isn't what, that gives us something.
We've had that for years, right?
Well, that's it. So we put that language in, we feel that gives us enough.
Okay, that helps.
Enough, okay? And the one thing I want to point out, for instance, you're going to, nobody asked me that question, well, what do you do in this instance, Tim, where we have, this definition would clearly put the house we're talking about in violation. The attorney and I have looked at it and say, what we would do is, anything, if they've got three unrelated people living there now, if they've got more than that, that fourth has got to go, right away. The other, we'd have to give them some time to come into compliance with this ordinance, just because they've been doing it. But since our ordinance allowed you to have up to three unrelated others, we can't go ahead and penalize them for that, but we will on the fourth person, if there is another in there. And what we will do is, they will eventually have to come into compliance, because they will be non-conforming with this. So we'll expect an amortization, so we'll work out some reasonable thing to do that. We'll have to do it on a case-by-case basis. So do you see what I'm, this is just how we're going to have to implement this thing.
I have a question.
Yes.
If the objective is to protect the single-family residents' communities, right? If someone has a microwave in their room, how, but there's the same number of unrelated people in a home, I mean, how is a kitchen facility making a difference?
Well, it has to be for storage, preparation, and all that. See, that's the common denominator. That means they don't need anything else in the house, see?
I get that, but if they did have the same kitchen, they did use the same kitchen, you still got the same people, the same unrelated, you got the same people.
Well, and that's it, that's fine.
How is that changing the community?
We've still got two families living in a single-family.
No, you have, but if they're acting as one family, it is.
But by eating in the same kitchen, they're acting as a family?
Because that's how dwelling units are done. It's when you create separate kitchen facilities, yeah, that's how it is done.
But how do you define a kitchen, then? Is it 220 volts?
Well, that's what we do, and exactly how we do it.
And, you know, here in the county, there are some places where you can drive by, and people have got their refrigerators on the front porch, because they don't have room in their bedroom for it.
Oh, they're Flanders, and they're washing machines.
The other question I have, Tim, and I don't know how we address it, is if it's unrelated, if several of them, if you could have, you could have six people there, if there was three married couples, then you only have three unrelated parties, because the other two are all related to each other.
Well, they would be unrelated, yeah, you could have two married couples, and they're all related somehow to each other. But I'm telling you, constitutionally, it doesn't work. We've got to throw it out.
Okay.
Just because the modern family does, you know what I mean? I don't even want to, you know, you can think of all the ways it doesn't work, so. And the funny thing is, our ordinance in other places has what they called shared living residences, where groups of seven or more, or seven people that are 55 and over can live together. Now, see, it really has some problems. So we didn't try to address that in this ordinance, because we're trying to, the boarding house is our main thing to deal with, okay? So.
Our attorney's not here, but I'm curious, why did you change S-E-V-E-N to the number seven?
Oh, because we're doing that throughout the code. That's been the recommendation to not use, to not spell it out, but use Arabic numbers rather than spell it out. That's just.
Well, grammatically, you're supposed to use, you're supposed to spell it out.
Well, you do.
Ten or less, but.
Well, at the beginning, but we're doing, this is, when you're doing codes, they don't, they don't recommend that, that's the reason. And you notice I've been doing that all throughout the code.
Saving Inc.
And Saving Inc., yes. All right, so that's critical. We changed the family definition, getting rid of the blood of marriage, so you can see, with common access to, common use of living, kitchen, eating areas within the dwelling unit. Notice I didn't say sleeping areas, they don't. All right, and multifamily, we just put that in line with that. And rooming house, the attorney said to put it there, because people talk about rooming house, but we're going to consider that the same as a boarding house, if that comes up. So those were the definitional changes, we think, that we're proposing to look at. The next page is probably a little more, this would be a different swing. This would basically, one of the issues that come out, where you have a lot of people living together, particularly they're not related, is multiple cars, and that's one reason this house was pointed out, is because these people are parking all over the place, would be to limit, or to restrict any parking in the front yards, where you don't have an improved parking, or a surface that's been improved. You could do it on temporary basis, like an occasional social event and all that, but it could not be permanent. And I was just going through a neighborhood today, and we do have that neighborhoods. So this would impact every residence in the city. I just want you to know that. So, but I know a lot of cities that do require this, and it does.
Even single-family.
Yes, even single-family. But it doesn't mean you can't get approval to have it done. So, you know, somebody could come in and say, well, I want to, you know, pave this, and once they get approval, so it just will prevent them from parking all over the grass, or dirt area, whatever they got on their property, unless it's an approved parking area. So.
Well, it has to be improved, and you're saying approved?
And it has to be approved, unauthorized or permitted improved surface, yes. When I say authorized, why I said that is because we have older, older multifamily, where they have hard, they don't really have an, it's, well, to say it's just a flat dirt, compacted dirt surface, I wouldn't call it improved, and I didn't want to be, you know, it's been approved for their parking. I'm not going back in after them now.
You can't approve anybody parking on their own grass.
That's correct.
Except on a temporary basis.
They could do it on a temporary basis, yes.
And we define temporary.
Well, it's for occasional social gatherings. I got into it with the attorney. I did have it, and he said, well, it's, so my feeling is, we use some common sense, where we start getting complaints. For instance, if you live near a ballpark, and everybody, every week, you had people selling out their thing, and, you know, to park on there, that would be more than occasional type thing, without getting into it. But we kind of decide not to go into any detail on that. I know that's.
Does it apply to a boat, too?
Yeah, boats are covered under a separate section. You can't have a boat in a front yard, anyway.
Okay, let me give you an example. I'm out and about at work, and there's a Comcast van sitting in my driveway, and so I have to park in the grass in my front yard. It's not a party, a wedding, a family.
Well, it'll be.
Temporary, right?
Yeah, but it doesn't say that. It says temporarily parked for occasional social gatherings.
I doubt if people are going to be coming over there to.
Well, yeah, but I'm just.
Would you like, no, if you would like, we could.
I don't think I'm going to get in trouble, but I'm just saying.
Well, for instance, Wayne and I were talking about, the city attorney and I were talking about, well, we were going to have language, you know, you could park, you could wash your car, you know?
I wasn't planning on washing my car.
Well, you know, by the time they get the phone call, and the Comcast guy would have left, you'll move it, so, you know?
Yeah, I just don't, I mean, I agree, it doesn't.
I'm just saying, it's built in that I'm going to break the rules.
It's built in.
Occasional services.
We could, if you would like, that's right. Mr. Burke has offered, how about we put in occasional services, or something like that?
Post office.
Yeah, yeah, let me go ahead, we'll put some language in there. That's, well, we're trying, we're not trying to cover.
Find out a possible.
That's all right.
Truck or something like that.
Okay. I mean, this is to take care of the situation we had, where they have motorcycles parked there, and a whole.
RVs.
RV, well, this will take care of the RVs in the front yard, yes.
This will keep your code enforcement busy, these parking on the grass.
Well, until people get familiar with what the code is.
How does it take care of the RVs?
Well, RVs, a lot of RVs, they'll park in the front yard, that's.
Because of the grass.
They're supposed to be on concrete or gravel.
And we haven't addressed the size and all that stuff, that's another thrilling thing to do.
Did you see the county with heights, too?
I know, I got all, I asked them, we were involved on the survey.
We're next, we're next.
Yeah, I didn't, yeah.
Protect our city.
I've already had three attempts to do that stuff, and every time I've been, not, you know, oh, just go away. So anyway, that's where we're at. We can add that additional language, Mr. Mutcher, that's fine, I don't think it's that critical. But I'll talk to the attorney, and we'll see, I mean, I think this is a start here. Okay?
The board wants us to put as much as we can, the way of teeth, into this to help this situation out, is that right? So we're not hung up on, too much on.
Human rights.
No, no, no.
I want to, I didn't think, and I don't, I still don't think it's proper for me to rent out part of my house.
Well, some places, they don't allow you to do that, but I think a property or has certain rights, and we have other cities, we looked at some in California, that their attorney general is opine, they could do up to two, and be okay.
I don't want to use the granola state as an example.
But I mean, if you all feel that you don't want to allow people to do that, okay, that's a decision, I just.
That state, isn't it, are we violating, are we bumping into the state, then?
No, the state doesn't, this isn't a state issue, not on this particular thing.
State is, I guess, short-term and vacation rentals.
But you don't want to do, what you don't want to do is affect the elderly person who needs additional revenue to rent a room out to Cousin Johnny, who's staying there and is paying $150 a month.
And this doesn't have to be, it could be somebody living there that does other things for you, you know, like cutting the grass, doing their cooking, could live in there. So you know what I mean, it's not necessarily they're getting.
What about these cases where this, these bad examples we've been looking at, that Mr. Hunter was talking about? The owner lady has the microwave in her little niche and rents out the rest of the house for $2,000.
Well, that would step, that would be into that area, depending on how much it's being done. You're right. I said, we now have, I can tell you, we now have, if we can get into places, we now have more, this gives us more teeth than we have and it's more, can stand a legal challenge. That's all I'm telling you.
And the way we find out about this is always through a complaint. Is that right?
Generally through...
I like this offer for use.
Yes, and that's something that's different.
Yeah, that means you can't advertise for it.
And it could be a violation.
You're deemed guilty if you advertise?
Well, if we know that you have already one renter in there, see, we'd have to know that you're already, are at a threshold, see? We could, if somebody just advertised for a roommate, we wouldn't know unless we knew what was in there. So that's what I'm saying. All this requires investigation. It's not a thing, but as I said, right now, the current code, because of, we believe, the unconstitutionality of it, doesn't give us a lot of leeway to go in there. That's why we put this additional language in here, you know?
Because our social norms are changing, it's like one of those squeegee balls you get when you squeeze it here, it swishes out over there and then comes back here. And you can never really control it. You just have to keep chasing it to try to, until you have some kind of parameters for it. And I think that's what we're doing here.
A whooping question?
Yeah. And I get, and I get back to that, you know, we follow a due process, you know? I know that, like, people want to complain, the next day they're doing that. Well, we don't know they're doing that until we have evidence. It'd be like somebody saying, I know that you did this in your house without a permit. Well, you're guilty. And then are we going to harass you until we find out because somebody told me that you, you know? We've got to be careful with this, see? And it's nice to have the neighbors involved, but they have to understand what we go through because would they want to be treated any differently? You know, that's...
Maybe we should say, maybe we wouldn't act in the same format that these, some of these people are acting. I think they recognize the norms of the community and they're definitely throwing that in other people's face and I don't think that's appropriate.
Well, and as I told a couple people when they were doing this, I said, you know, a lot of times you don't get a vacation rental or a boarding house complaint because the way they operate the place, you wouldn't really know.
That's right.
You know, and that's clear. And that means they're not managing it properly. And this lady, clearly, all these cars up front, it's like saying, hey, here we are, come and pick on me, you know? And, you know, I think most neighbors let bygones be bygones. And if, but when you start having these kind of disruption, parties at night and all that, that's the problem, you know? And I think that's what we deal with. I think I'm getting tired.
You got your work cut out for you, huh? I think they're looking for a German here. I folded my papers and pushed them closer together.
For a reason.
For a reason, I guess, like you are doing. So moved, we are now adjourned.
Hey, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Tim.
Thank you, a lot of work.